At this time, I'm gonna ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O gracious God, we come as uncles, we know how. Lord, tonight, we want to say thank you for being such a good God to each and every one of us. We thank you, Lord, for forgiving us for our sins, for we all have sinned and fallen short of your glory. We ask you, Lord, as we assemble here tonight, to direct our minds, direct our hearts, that we will agree to disagree, and that we will handle the matters of this city and the city's business and do it decent and in order. We further, Lord, pray for those who are sick and shut in, those who are bereaved at this time, those individuals who are fighting in harm's way. We ask that you would be with them, protect them, comfort them, and be with their families, oh Lord. Now, Lord, when we leave here tonight, we pray that you will direct us safely to our destination, and let us find that all is well within our homes. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen. Madam Clerk, if I may call the roll?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Wood?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Starnes?
Counselor Whiteside?
Counselor Bowles?
Here.
Counselor Boone?
Here.
I call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. Our character trait of the money is sincerity, doing what is right with transparent motives, a good character trait, sincerity. This time, we have approval of minutes, public hearing in City Council meeting made at thirty twenty sixteen.
Some may...
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. Mayor, you have a report.
Yes, sir, I do, and I might add for multiple points of privilege.
Yeah.
And before I go into that, I'd just like to really say, you know, wow, wasn't that a great pledge tonight? Could everybody else hear the echo that was going on? And I think it was because of our future, our young ones that are back here, and it just brings, just makes us proud to be a part of America and be small-town American there. But if we might have that point of privilege, Mr. President, I'd like to...
Yes, sir.
And tonight, with the multiple point of privilege, I am gonna need a little bit of assistance. If I can, ask Ms. Curvin to come forward, please. While she's coming forward, I just wanted to speak a little bit about be meaningful. It's a new community service project oriented in Prattville that was created by eight-year-old Mollye Curvin as a way to encourage kids to do things in the community. And at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to her. No? Well, I will continue on, but she should come over and buy me if she wasn't mine. Anyway, throughout the year, youth are encouraged to perform various acts of community service and acts of kindness. The idea is, don't be mean, be meaningful. Each individual performs at least ten hours or more of community service over a six-month period, recognized for their commitment to making this community better. In April, I signed a proclamation recognizing a be meaningful community for service day. Today, thirty individuals being recognized for their community for service efforts. These individuals completed a total of more than four hundred and fifty hours of community service over the past six months, and statistics show that children who volunteer are better students, grown-ups who be volunteers, stay out of trouble, more likely to become future community leaders, and I truly believe we're gonna have quite a few of those over here and out here in the crowd, like city councilors and mayors. But at this point in time, if we can have them all come up and while they are making their way up to the front, just to read over some of them, and actually, one thing that's sort of amazing to me, we're talking from age of four, age of four, all the way up through twenty-one years of age, and it is so great. I mean, it's where they volunteer to read the first graders, picking up litter, and we have Michaela Anderson, Bowie and Kelly Booth, Abby and Anna Deason, Brianna, Caitlin and Tyler DeCruff, Mia Flynn, Bradley Gray, Chloe Hope, Maggie Curvin, Wyatt Curvin, Emily Lawrence, Campbell Maddox, Lily Marlin, Bobby Martin, Kaylee McDonald, Maddy McDonald, Charis McHenry, Bella Thomas, Bison Thomas, Macy Truett, Thomas Tidmore, Emily Myers, Laura Myers, Madison, Peyton, Chelsea Allen, Mary Catherine Allen. Obviously, a big family there, and actually, looking back over the crowd, I see quite a few of our city employees has their family members up here, and so now, the city employees are giving back in their day-to-day activities here, their families are also giving back. So, you know, it just really makes me proud to be a Prattvillian. And during our office visit that I had several months ago, when this was first brought to me, actually, I got one of the be meaningful medallions, and we actually traded medallions in the office there. I know she was a little bit shy just a few minutes ago. I'd like for her to come up, and I'd actually like to give her this back, and because she has done so much, worked so hard, and I just certainly do appreciate everything that you have done. (applause) You know, that's one thing I've noticed over the years around Prattville. If you ever need community service, look for volunteerism, patriotism, that's just Prattville's one area you can definitely find it. So, I do certainly want to thank all of our new, up-and-coming Prattvillians, and one day, you might be the mayor or the councillor, city clerk, city engineer, city planner, firefighters, our clean city professionals. The job list goes on and on and on, but I certainly do appreciate everything that you guys have done. Did you say three hundred?
Yes, that's right. Total hours, four hundred and fifty hours.
Well, I'm involved...
Oh, yes. If you include their parents.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, you know, you have so many of the same last names coming from the same families, that it just goes to show that it runs through the generations. And I truly believe that Daniel Pratt would be exceptionally pleased for all of this.
Mayor, would you like some assistance? Are you okay?
If you won't come around, I can, we can make sure. But now, we're gonna hurry up.
No, I just, I don't want your arms to get too weak.[477.12][477.12](laughter) While he's doing that, though, I do think that this slogan, "Don't be mean, be meaningful", is an ideal slogan. Very, has a lot of meaning to it.
You know, as I was talking, I left out, we actually have a judge in the audience, Well, again, I want to thank you guys for everything that you have done for this community, for all the lemonade stands and everything else that you guys are picking up the litter, and just all the organization, the book reading and everything else, and it just, actually, you guys have made Prattville better with this big project. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, but I did ask for a multitude of points of privilege, so I promise I will keep these short. I'd actually, at this point in time, I'd actually like to ask Chief Thompson to come forward.
If you would just hold on just for one minute, look like these people want to exit,
I wanted to commend Chief Thompson, because the other day, he threw a softball and put me in the dunking boot during the City Fest, and I didn't know that he was that good of a shot. But seriously, you know, it, I don't know, I mean, I hope anybody here has noticed that our flags were at half-staff, and it was because of the National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whenever you look over proclamation, one of the things you can actually look at is how many wherashes are in there. When you have normally more than four, that usually shows how important it is, and this one has a lot more than four. And, but it is very important, you know, that we recognize all of our first responders, but most importantly, this week is our, you know, Peace Officers Memorial Day and Week, but, and I ask Chief Thompson to accept this on behalf of his family and comrades, and it's, whereas May fifteenth through the twenty-first, National Police Week, and proclaim May fifteenth to be Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Prattville, and call upon all Prattvillians to display the flag, the half-staff in their homes and businesses on this day. Please join me in publicly saluting the service of our law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And again, I want to thank you for everything that you do for this community, because you have made it a better, safe environment. And it has been, it has been a very busy time, because there's also, this is also Public Works Week and Infrastructure Week, and we have a proclamation on that, and we all know that the roles that we, that we are in as elected officials, we're here to provide services. We are a service-oriented organization, and where our roles are not the true professionals. True professionals are the ones who come in day in and day out, our first responders, our public works, our general government, and because we are, we're part of the fixtures that will come and go. And I just want to say thank you to all of our department heads and everybody else that actually pulls all the strings that make communities work, whether it's here in Prattville or across the way. But also, I wanted to recognize that this is also Public Works Week on this one. You know, as I mentioned earlier about being dunked earlier by Chief Thompson, that was referencing City Fest, which was hugely, hugely successful. We want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce for their efforts, and we also like to thank all the city departments and employees who participated, those who are members of our City Fest Committee, all the city departments that helped set up, coordinate logistics, cleanup, takedown, and generally guarantee the success of this important event. Takes a village, and Prattville does it very well. Our City Fest was even discussed in Huntsville while I was there. Now, I just arrived home from the League Convention in Huntsville, receiving instructions and training. Counselor Whiteside has stood at the convention during some additional training. On tonight's agenda, councillors, you might remember that consent agenda item number three was previously awarded to Dogtown Beach area in 2012, but was determined by all involved that the better location was Allenville Road. Due to the location change, we were required to return the grant and reapply. Now, Deco Fields is a good project, and its development has actually worked to our benefit as the funding for LWCF has increased. The application is for maximum cap of cash or in-kind services, but the actual amount needed is yet to be determined. And moving right on along, councillor, Saturday's gonna be a very busy day, but a fun day. We'll kick off at nine AM at Wetstone Sports Complex for Armed Forces Day. Please join us as we honor those who serve this nation selflessly. At nine forty-five AM, we'll meet at Upper Kingston Park for the mayor's bike ride. To get there, a few minutes early, to register for a free bike, we're giving away to one lucky rider who'll ride from Upper Kingston to Pratt Park with police escort. Ten AM, the up-and-growing Touch a Truck program event will commence, come out and get inside, honk a horn, meet the people that drive these wonderful trucks, equipment, so much more for our public, public works and general government area in there. So, Mr. President, seeing to my report. Now, any questions?
Touch a Truck is gonna be where?
Pratt Park.
Pratt Park.
Twenty-twelve.
Thank you.
Park of the, park of the year.
You don't want to have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a report from Council Special Committees. Counselor Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
This time, Finance Director will give a report.
The financial packet should be in front of you for the month of April. The first sheet in the packet is the revenue report for the month of April. You'll see that year-to-date, we are at three point six-four percent compared to last year. That is very positive, considering the fact that this year, we're not receiving any of the ambulance fees from the county, so that's the reason the fees line is down, but overall, we are up three point six-four percent. The next sheet in the packet is the tax breakdown comparison, shows all the tax line items and how we fare for the month of April. You'll see that for the month of April, we were up two point nine-seven percent. The next set of sheets in the packet is the expense by department for the month of April. You'll see that we're fifty percent through the year on the expense side, and as you'll see, we've spent fifty-three point nine-five percent of our budgeted expenses. A portion of that is due to the large expenditure of debt service at the beginning of the year. The next set of sheet in the packets is the wastewater fund and price fund statement, and that one shows, so far, they've received fifty-three point nine-six percent of their budgeted revenue, and they have spent fifty-four point oh-two percent of their budgeted expenditures, so they're running very positive. The next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You'll see that they have brought in forty-nine point six percent of their budgeted revenues, and they have spent sixty-nine point nine-eight percent of their budgeted expenses. That is due to the large capital outlay for the equipment that has come in. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. They received forty-two point oh-four percent of their budgeted revenue. That has started to tick up some due to income tax interceptions, so we should hopefully see that a little bit further up for the month of April. And the expenses are running right in line with what they should be. They've only spent forty-five point four-four percent of their budgeted expenses. The next sheet in the packet is the bank balances for the month of April thirty, April two thousand and sixteen. The total of all city cash accounts is nineteen million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the last sheet in the packet is the accounts payable and debt balances, showing the balance on April of twenty sixteen is thirty-seven million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Well, Finance Director, this time. We do have a consent agenda to consider tonight. We have five items to consider on a consent agenda. Number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Number two is a resolution to submit the municipal water pollution prevention annual reports to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADM. Number three is a resolution to authorize the mayor to make an application for FY twenty sixteen land and water conservation fund grant, and commit a match of up to a maximum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars through cash and/or in-kind services to develop recreational resources at the Allenville Road Park. Number four is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance, order their abatement, and set a public hearing per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Number five is a resolution to surplus one vehicle and various equipment from the police department. We have a motion to place these items on a consent agenda.
Some may.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. It'll be in a discussion. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Some may.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on adoption. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and the consent agenda has been adopted. We go further in our agenda. Number one is a resolution to amend FY twenty sixteen budget and to award bid number zero one six dash double zero seven to emergency lighting by Hanes for the purchase of emergency lights and equipment and installation for twenty seventeen Ford interceptor SUVs that are cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Counselor Striplin will read it, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Police Department has a need for emergency lights, equipment, and installation for five twenty seventeen Ford interceptor SUVs, and whereas six bids were let for the police department for said emergency light slash equipment and installation, and whereas one sealed bid was received, and emergency lighting by Hanes was the lowest responsible bidder at a cost of five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents per vehicle, and whereas one of the five vehicles will be outfitted with emergency lights and equipment already in the city's possession, and will only need graphics, and whereas said graphics and installation of equipment are available through Hanes emergency lighting at a cost not to exceed six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the FY twenty sixteen reserves are hereby decreased by twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, and the FY twenty sixteen budget line item, police department slash capital outlay, is hereby increased by twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby awards bid number sixteen dash zero zero seven in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents to emergency lighting by Hanes for said emergency light slash equipment and installation for the twenty seventeen Ford interceptor SUVs, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY twenty sixteen budget line item, police department slash capital outlay. Some move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It'll be in a discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number two is a resolution to release funds for roofing of the shop building at the Pine Creek Treatment Plant to Thrill Kill Incorporated in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Counselor Striplin will read it, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Wastewater Department has a need to install an A-frame roof system and a twenty-six gauge or better metal roof on the shop building at the Pine Creek Treatment Plant, and whereas Thrill Kill Incorporated has the expertise to install said roof at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, and whereas said project is a budgeted expense for the Public Works Division slash wastewater department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Thrill Kill Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY twenty sixteen budget line item wastewater enterprise fund slash capital projects. Some move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It'll be in a discussion. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. Number three is a resolution to set a public hearing of rezoned property located at the west side of North Memorial Drive adjacent to two twenty-five North Memorial Drive and north of Prattville Square Shopping Center, and known as the Gillian Property, from B three Community Shopping District to B two General Business. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Executive Court Incorporated is the owner of the property described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits at the west side of North Memorial Drive adjacent to two twenty-five North Memorial Drive and north of Prattville Square Shopping Center, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezon the property from B three Community Shopping District to B two General Business, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on April twenty-first, twenty sixteen, and whereas the city of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning of said property be amended as described in Attachment A and Attachment B from B three Community Shopping District to B two General Business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that a public hearing is set for June twenty-first, twenty sixteen, at six PM in the city, in the council chambers at City Hall. Some move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It'll be in a discussion. All in favor of adoption of this resolution, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. Counselor Brown, will you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the zoning ordinance of the city of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February tenth, nineteen fifty, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May nineteen eighty-seven, are hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from B three Community Shopping District to B two General Business, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress and newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the city of Prattville, and that the city council of the city of Prattville at its public hearing on the twenty-first day of June twenty sixteen at six PM considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the city of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments hearing contained were considered and approved by the city of Prattville Planning Commission on April twenty-first, twenty sixteen. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law.
Some move.
Some move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This sets a public hearing for this item for June, twenty-first of June, six PM in That exhausts our agenda. At this time, we have comments from persons present on any item they wish to speak on. Come to the podium, please, sir, state your name for the rec.
Steve Wyatt, seven thirty-four Smith Avenue. Mr. President, councilmembers, I apologize for being a piss here, but the residents of Smith, we're at our wits' end with speeders up and down that street. Just to keep you updated a little bit, we had a speed detection device, a recording device, there for two weeks. Thought we had some great data, but turned out, we had a technical difficulty, and we don't have any data to give you now. I have some personal data, but it's not official. But the problem is getting worse instead of better. This other day, I had one car do the speed limit, had somebody pass him going down the street. We've got elderly people and kids there, and it's, it's a matter of time before we have something that we don't want to happen. We had a police presence for a little bit, for a few days, and I thought it was gonna be, you know, the way to go, but now that's tapered off some. I haven't seen any recently. And I just want to let the council know that we're, you know, the residents are very concerned, and we don't know exactly what to do. We need to have something to slow these people down. The problem is getting worse instead of better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention again. I'm sure the administration has hurt your concern. I know you was here before about that. I'm sure they'll look into it. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor, you have any further comment? Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
Let me just announce, I'm gonna be calling the Finance Committee in the very near future, possibly for this... possibly for this coming Monday. I will contact the clerk and the committee members in the next couple of days and make sure that that works for everybody. Again, thank everyone for coming to this meeting tonight. Thank the city employees for all that you do. Thank the council and the mayor. And we thank the citizens of Prattville for putting up with the council and the mayor. Because without the citizens, we couldn't do anything. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June seventh, two thousand and sixteen, six PM in here in each council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.